Councillor Olson.
Here.
Bridge.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Mertick.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Finsland.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Dahlbeck.
Here.
No Wiki.
Here.
And Saether.
Here.
As in the past, I will be voting, I'll use my privilege to vote on any issues that come before the council. I'd like to call on Mick McKenzie for presentation.
Before I present this certificate to Mr. Kellm for his volunteer work, I felt it appropriate to tell you a little bit about him. I first met Ray about 20 years ago when he was a very young man of 65. I think that made me around 20, wasn't it Ray?
Yeah.
Yeah. We were fulfilling our civic duty as jurors on a murder trial. It turned out our jury was sequestered, so we had some time to get to know each other. It was during this one week period that I learned Ray was no stranger to law and to civic duty. He explained how he had worked as a constable, a police officer, and ultimately the chief of police in Cook, Minnesota. I listened closely as he spoke of his patriotism by joining the Navy at the age of 17 shortly after the events of Pearl Harbor in 1941. Later, he showed me pictures of the city. He and his shipmates were allowed to tour in August of 1945. The city was Hiroshima and it was just 10 days after the atomic bomb was dropped there. As you might be able to tell, Ray's life has been anything but boring and certainly not selfish. I've always known him to be genuinely concerned about the welfare of his family, friends, and the community in which he lives in. So, when he heard of the Arrowhead Reconstruction Project, he wanted to learn more. With the help of Mary Morgan, I supplied Ray with his own map of the new pier and the proposed project start date. When the work did finally get underway, he was on-site practically every day watching the progress and the development of the project until completion. I think Ray gave me, I think, updates, I think, weekly, so I didn't have to go to the site as much, but I still did. More importantly, he provided before and after working hour security, which greatly ensured the success, the function, and quality of this beautiful facility. So with that said, on behalf of the City of Superior, the City Council, Parks and Recreation, I'm proud to present this certificate to Ray Kellm that reads: In appreciation for his volunteer stewardship of the Arrowhead Fish and Pier Reconstruction Project, Mr. Kellm presided over the project daily during the summer of 2010, monitoring primarily for vandalism. Further, he went above and beyond his civic duty by providing amenities to the site at his own expense, opening and closing the restroom each day during a period of time when the programmable locks were not operational. The City of Superior is very grateful to Mr. Kellm for his exceptional interest in the project and his concern for the care of the city facility, and that's dated 15th of March 2011. Congratulations, Ray.
Congratulations, Ray. Thank you for your work.
You want to give a speech?
Well, I just wanted to, I wanted to thank the whole council for putting in the dock down there, getting it ready, and I'm sure a lot of the citizens of Superior will appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to call on Councillor Bender for another presentation.
And I'll ask Janet Jennings if she'll step up. And before I read the commendation here on the, I guess we'd say, the eve of Janet's retirement, just a couple things that I would like to say. These are some ideas that I got off an article that was in The Telegram, and I couldn't, it was within the last couple months anyway. And it's, and first is a quote by a person whom many of us know, Dr. Patrick Doran, and what he says, "What was most important to her was to provide first-class service to the public." And anybody who's been in the library within the last 14 years had a chance to see that. And then from a friend of Janet's and mine, this is from Tula Harris, who many of us also know, "Libraries play a critical role, especially when the economy is down. What better place to get access to materials?" And then one more that starts on page one and ends on page two, this is from Kathleen Schultz, or Catherine Schultz, who is one of the founding members of the Friends of the Library Group, and my wife and I are members of the Friends of the Library Group. And it says, "She's been an excellent director," and she also says at the end, "I will certainly miss her." And before I read this, one other thing that I would like to read, and that's that Janet Jennings, this is something that came in the mail for the Friends of the Library, but everybody's invited to this, everybody from the public has invited this, "Janet Jennings is retiring. Help her celebrate April 1st, 1 to 3, at the Superior Public Library." So, without further ado, I'll read this. Hold this a little farther away so I can see it better. "In appreciation of your 14 years of hard work and dedication to the City of Superior and its citizens, under your leadership, the Superior Public Library embraced technology, made friends," with a capital F, "and turned up the energy savings. You provided a first-class service to the public and did so with a positive attitude, logic, and caring. You made the library more user and children-friendly. Service and accent and access have been greatly improved under your leadership, and the library is busier today than it has ever been. One of your first actions was to connect an automated consortium of libraries through Northern Waters Library Service. This doubled the amount of materials available to patrons, who can now request items from 22 different libraries. It also paved the way for the opening of the Branch Libraries in Soul and Springs and Lake Nebaggman. The Superior Public Library now has 22 internet-capable computers through numerous grants to improve technology. Another huge accomplishment was to give the library supporters an outlet through the Friends of the Library. This is a volunteer force formed 13 years ago, who took over the annual book sales, sell postcards and cookbooks, clean out library areas, and sponsor various programs through the public. You have always had positive pro-reading literacy influence, as evidenced by your participation in rolling readers. Thank you, and we wish you the best of luck in your retirement and your future endeavors. Signed by Council President Bob Finson and the members of the common council, and dated today." So congratulations, Janet. That's for you. And you want to step up and say a few words?
It has been a real privilege to serve you as your library director. The library in Superior, if you don't know it, is a real treasure. And oftentimes, when people come and visit the library from other cities, other states, they say, "Wow, this is such a great library." And I say, "I know." And it's been great. And it isn't just me that has doing all the work of all these wonderful things. I've had a wonderful staff to work with, various people on the library board over the years, the Friends of the Library have been putting in a lot of time and effort. And it's a team effort, and I'm hoping, you have a new library director who has just announced today, her name is Susan Heskin. I hope that, you know, she'll have great support from the community and the City Council, and the library continues to go on. I plan on being a library user and being part of the Friends of the Library book sale the last week in April, from the other side, being a volunteer. And it'll be fun to move in from the role of paid employee to the role of volunteer, and I hope this library stays strong for many years to come. And thank you.
I'd like to make one other announcement, that Friday will be Jeff Vito's last day, on Friday the 18th, and from 2:00 to 4:00, we'll have coffee and refreshments in the atrium of the facility here, so if you can make it there, say goodbye to Jeff. I don't think he's leaving town, but I think we'll miss him very much in the city.
Item number four is approval of the minutes from the March 1st regular meeting and, I'm sorry, the March 1st regular meeting and the March 4th special council meeting.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Mr. Herrick?
No, no, this is, I just want to, I just want to say something after we're done with this particular item. Thank you.
All right. Motion been made and seconded, are all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Herrick?
Yeah, one thing first is I want to welcome the Boy Scouts here tonight. One of the things they, the primary why they're here for is to work on our citizenship in the community, Mayor Badge, which is one of the requirements that are for the Eagle Ranking. And one of the things they have to do is either attend a city council meeting or a school board meeting, and it looks like they chose to come here this evening. So I just want to welcome them. The second item of concern is, of course, we all heard about the catastrophe over in Japan. At this time, I'd just like to say that our prayers and our hearts are with the people of Japan, especially the sister cities of Duluth and Superior. And I just want to relay that to them, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herrick.
Item six is a consent agenda.
Motion approved. Motion been made and seconded to approve. Mr. Olson, you have your letter.
I'd like to pull item 6.5, please.
6.5. Anyone else have any items to remove from the consent agenda? If not, we'll have a vote on the balance of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, and we'll go to item 6.5.
Just a comment more than anything, Jeff, with your report here. In our packets, for people out there, we got a detailed recycling program that came from WLSSD, and they've got a real good program there. It gives us tips on how to recycle, the best way to do it, the most economical, and the recycling program as a whole. And when we entered into our agreement with Hartel, we had left money in the contract to get educational pieces to the citizens of Superior. One of the concerns that I have is, down in Madison, Governor Walker's considering getting rid of the recycling as mandated, and I think it's very important to Superior that we continue with this program, and maybe be appropriate to have Hartel and those people come and reiterate what their program is, how we can make the recycling program in Superior better. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve item 6.5? Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further question or comment? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passed.
Item 7.1, Finance Director Vito is requesting to award the financial software procurement.
And Jean, I understand you have a request at this time?
Yeah, a request to pull this off the agenda for tonight. Hopefully, we'll have it back either in a couple, three weeks, or at some point in April.
So item 7.1 will be removed from the agenda?
Item 8.1, Council President Finsland is requesting to reappoint Greg Date to the Plan Commission for another three-year term, and to appoint Bob Gallick to the Stride Committee as a representative of the City of Superior and the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Mick?
Jerry, that's Bill Gallick.
Gallick. Gallick.
How'd I read?
Bob.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
Bill Gallick. Gallick.
Nice letter and his last name.
We know who it is.
Item 9.1, Councillor Olson is to present the 2010 State of the City in Review.
We need to vote on that, not 8.1.
8.1, yeah.
What else can I goof at tonight?
We're going a little too faster. Motion to approve 8.1? Okay. Thank you. Any opposition? Now we'll get to Councillor Olson.
Well, I want to welcome everybody here. This is a little out of the ordinary for a councillor to do this, but seeing as we didn't have a sitting mayor, and I got outvoted nine to one to make you councillors all the mayor, I thought that with some stuff that we have going on, that I would take this on myself, and I think it'll be just a, just a good event. I want to thank Mayor Ness coming over from Duluth. It's very important that we cooperate, communicate, and keep our eyes on Duluth as well. We're connecting cities, we have a lot of people in Wisconsin that work in Duluth, that live in Wisconsin, work in Duluth, I'm one of those, and a lot of people from Duluth that work over here, so I think that's very imperative that we keep those communications open. For anybody that's real tense, I didn't have much of a budget for food, so I brought a 12-pack of Coke and a box of Girl Scout cookies. That's all I had, so, anyway. With that, I've highlighted some of the, and I want to first of all thank you to department heads, they were very gracious and giving me some information as to how our city has moved forward in 2010. I really won't get into too much as to where we're going forward in 2011, except for some ongoing stuff. I think that the people of the city need to hear where we've been for the last year. We've got some real trying times ahead of us, and this council and the, Bruce Hagan and Kevin Peterson are here. One of those two are going to be leading our city into the next four years, so we have a lot of things going on that we need to be aware of, and some of them that I'm going to mention, I hope, are the highlights that we've done in the last year. We started off the year last year going down the Superior days, we've always had a good partnership with the City of Superior and the university extension system. Last year was 25 years going down there, and it started 25 years ago with getting a four-lane highway from Rice Lake to Superior, and we've got many, many accomplishments, too many to mention, so right from the beginning, that has always been a good thing for the Ray was here with the Arrowhead Pier Projects, and there was a lot of people that were involved with that. The Wisconsin Coastal Management spearheaded that up, and some private groups were involved with that as well to make that happen, so, and I know that the people that I talk to, it's a very welcomed addition to our city. One of the other ones, too, that very badly needed in the City of Superior was that Superior Lighthouse project. We've created a place for elderly people to go to now, we need more. There's areas, there's not much for low-income there, but there are people that are there for medical needs and memory lapse people, so it's a great facility that we're a partner with. We had the infrastructure, we, you know, we gave money from the city to make that project happen as well. Before I get into the departments, all over the City of Superior, you've seen different road projects, we had some stimulus projects that created new sewers out in South Superior and Billings Park. We had some mill and overlay projects, we had the rebuilding of Banks Avenue between Broadway and 13th, and there's going to be a second phase of that this year. But I'll get into these real quick, there's no specific order, and what I've done is, I've kind of highlighted what the departments gave to me, and, starting with the legal department and Frog, and then with the human resources with Kami, we've, and listen to these because a lot of them are partnerships, and that's what we need to do. One department is going to tell me what they did with another one, and in a minute from now, I'll tell you that another department worked with the other one. And that's important, that's vital to our community. So anyway, the legal department has worked with the Public Works and Finance to secure the eight-year contract with WLSSD, which was in our packets, and this contract would generate millions of dollars over eight years, that would offset the cost of the city landfill. And along with that, Frog has worked with Chief Peters, as well as other attorneys and law enforcement leadership, from Douglas County, St. Louis County, and again, the City of Duluth, to form the Lake Superior Forensics Technology and Internet Crime Against Children. You know, our children are victims of this stuff, and they don't even realize it, so that's important. Continue to work with the building inspection to improve and streamline those areas, and that one, too, mayor, is in Duluth as well, so, again, partnerships, we near each other in some aspects. Coordinated in-depth training for open meeting and public records laws that have been shared with the staff and elected officials of Douglas County, another partnership with the county. And a couple of things here that I liked to see was that the department was able to return $27,000, which is 10% of the general fund budget, back from the city attorney's budget. So that's phenomenal, that's great, that that happens. Down to the human resources, continued to conduct all human resources services in a legal and ethical matter, another partnership. Officer training, testing process of 129 applicants, so we're working with the police department, and that's creating a hiring list to be used by new hires. Initiated a firefighter testing process to create a hiring list, again, for new, in new hires, and that one's still in process, but there's 153 applicants to that, so, again, very important stuff. Coordinated training for all city employees in job-related areas of safety and liability. When I get to the finance, you're going to hear that we've been able to keep the health insurance rates down. Part of that is safety, and being able to eliminate our liabilities with accidents, anything within the city that, you know, job-related areas. With that, work comp cases had a 59% reduction, and that is huge, because when we have to insure our employees, that's what they look at. Workman's comp is the number one driving cost and insurance cost. And actually, it's the lowest for the city in more than 10 years, so that's great, and that's a great tribute to our workers, both in the union system and in the departments and clerical. And again, another one to point out here, that Human Resources was able to return almost $11,000, which is 4.7% of the budget back to, with the help of the independent savings by the city attorney's office, so those are great. Another one, too, which none of us like to see, but Frog had to convict 28 drunken drivings. Drunken drivings alone are bad enough, but then for individuals in our communities or surrounding communities, again, cost of insurance as you go through, it's more, there's more to meet the eyes when a person goes through that, whether it's a disease, or whether it's by choice, or, you know, there's a lot more things to it, so, not a real good thing to have to do, I'm sure, but you got to do it. Another one, too, here with the department there, is collecting over $8,500 in cases where individuals purposely or negligently destroyed city property. So, we got that going on, whether it's vandalism, graffiti, I'm not even sure what the, Frog, but that's, appreciate that happening. And then, collected $13,000 in court order restitution, sewage delinquencies, and foreclosure judgments, and that may not seem like a lot, but some of these areas involve the CDBG, and if there's not taken care of, and we can't get these items taken care of, we're in the, you know, it's part of a project that have been approved, improved by the CDBG fund, so. And then, moving on to our public service and safety, the fire department responded to 38 structure fires and a total of 122 fires. Hazardous material calls, we're at 46 for the year, and we got a total of 3,048 calls for the year, and I'm assuming some of them, Chief Riggs, that you're behind the pole there, but that were medical calls as well, but our fire department has been when we've needed them. We had a couple of big fires, being the Moose Club and the Menaceville Garage, and I got this report from Jim, and I got to ask you, when you say they're a good stop, I'm not sure what a good stop is when you called out to a fire, but...
A good stop is stopping the damage before it goes too far.
And safety as well, I'm sure.
Yes.
Installed a diesel exhaust removal system in the three stations to improve firefighters' health, again, relates to insurance costs. And we received FEMA aid, the firefighter grant, total cost of $82,000, and 90%, of it was paid from the grant that we applied for. And received approval of a port security grant for $150,000 for upgrading radios to meet new requirements, and another one for $280,000 to replace a dive team truck. And the city sent three firefighters to industrial training out at BP and Murphy Oil, so we're a partner in those places, we aid in the fire safety there. I wanted to get to Chief Peters because these grants are important to me. In the police department, there were three new officers hired in 2010. We launched the Sex Offender Accountability Project called SOAP, continued upgrading technology in the squad cars, received a federal grant, COPS federal grant, which is Community Problem Orientated Police Coordinating. There was over 100 police agencies that applied for this, and Superior was one of five departments that were chosen for that. And the officers are doing more in, in community policing, Wisconsin points, again, targeting for thieves, areas where the police have to go out and the attention be brought to the police department. One bad thing, two bad things that were involved in our city in 2010 was the Sylvester McCurry missing person case, and there was hundreds of hours spent on that, and of course, the Majes homicide-suicide, so those things are, they affect our city as well. People look at our city and, there's no answer for what happens in most of those things, but they happen, and our police department is doing a good job at following up on those Down to grants again, and Chuck, I've commended you in the past for these, we've got a fantastic grant writer in Chuck Legess, and it's imperative here, Ian. A VAWA ERA grant for $42,000 to be used in assisting investigating domestic violence cases, $15.7,000 for Domestic Abuse Reduction Team, and local justice assistance grant for $14,000, and a couple of port city grants, $500,000 in conjunction with the Douglas County Emergency Management, and another police portable radio upgrade grant for $80,000. So, when we're getting, when we're applying for these grants, and we're getting them, and they're coming back to the city, it's, because we have people that know what they're doing, they're successful at them, and we need you to continue doing that. One of the things that I would like to see in the city is, in the coming years, that we expand our grant writing. If we can do it through CDBGs, or if we can do it through general funds somewhere to help alleviate the problems that we have in front of us with the decrease in shared revenue that is right in front of us, I think it'd be a great asset to our city and a great opportunity to go after some of these funds. Some of them are federal, so we may have a better chance right now than what we do at the state level, so we need to pursue those. In the finance department, the city was able to maintain our AA bond rating even during challenging financial times, and Standards &amp; Poor's, who we get this from, has commented in the past and presently that our financial management practices are good and consistent, and highlighted with general fund reserve levels that are considered to be very strong. So that's, that's very important for lending opportunities in the future. As I mentioned earlier about insurance, the highlight here is that the city was able to keep the health insurance rates the same as 2010. Evidently, I'm assuming going forward to that 2011s will be the same as 2010, so that's, that's important, especially with the contributions that employees are going to have. Evidently, I'm assuming going forward to that 2011s will be the same as 2010, so, that's important, especially with the contributions that employees are gonna have to start making towards their plans. And again, partnership, together with the city attorney's department and the public works department, the eight-year contract with WLSST, so we've had legal, we've had finance, and we've had public works that partnered in these endeavors, and we were successful at getting them. Again, the city and county finance departments working together. We had a meeting here a while back, I don't even remember when it was, but they were trying to work on our software and be able to be on the same software, both the county and the city, and actually, it'll make things a lot easier to work together, and we had some discussion about where we were gonna try and get the county and the city to work together on other items, so. One other one, too, that I added in, Mick McKenzie was very instrumental working with the finance department and other folks, Jeff was here tonight, but anybody that was involved in that committee for the ARF and the Douglas County Humane Society and the fact that animal allies may be taking the lead in this, we need a new shelter, there's no doubt about that. Funding is very short, so we need to, we really need to dig into some of these areas and see what we can do for the animals and the people that have to get rid of their animals, so we have a place for them, too. In the planning department, Jason was successful in adopting, well, with the help of everybody, I guess, here, but the city's comprehension plan from 2010 to 2030, and the Gavron Grain Dockwell reconstruction was completed, and that was worth 2.8 million. And Fraser Shipwreck right now has gone out for bid. We awarded the contract here to Lundt about a month ago, and Phase 1 is $2.3 million, Phase 2, $2 million. Banks Avenue, the reconstruction of that was $390,000, and I will tell you that I was a little miffed at how long it took to get that project done, so we're gonna work pretty good on what we're gonna do with Phase 2. We had some businesses that suffered a little bit from it, and we need to keep our businesses in mind, too, with what they've got going. Continued our sidewalk program with the CDBGs, last year at 122,000, and the point that we're looking at, close to $1 million in 2011, is very exciting. We're gonna get some long-needed sidewalks, safe routes to schools, I believe are still a part of it, and just safety in general in some of our sidewalks. So, that number is, that's great. We will, with those projects, be putting a lot of local people to work, which is another part of what we need to do to stay together, come together, and work as a city and make sure that these things happen. We also completed the Conners Point Industrial Park for the time being with the opening of AMI Consulting Engineers. That was a private investment, over $1 million, 1.2 million. Beautiful building, if you get a chance, if you're walking your dog or anything, go all the way down to the end of Conners Point underneath the High Bridge, it's a fantastic site. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the completion of the Lighthouse of Superior, that was a $4 million investment, and we have our citizens in Superior. People that didn't want to leave their community now have a place to go, and hopefully we'll be entering into an agreement with another one of those buildings shortly in the future here. Mary Morgan, I talked to her, and she's on her way on vacation, so, some of the things that we did at the park and recs department, I was involved with Workers Memorial Day. Last year was our first one, and I've been a partner in Duluth, Mayor, with that one for, I believe, 20 years we've been doing it over there, and we'll be doing it again in Duluth, and we're gonna achieve it again here in Superior. Arrowhead Fishing Pier was approximately $800,000, and there were grants in there as well that we applied for. And we had a delay on that project, and we were able to secure those grants anyway, and that was a good sign of state leadership in maintaining the grants that we applied for and holding them for us to make that happen. We established the city's first disc golf course in Central Park, and that was led by the local youth of our community. They had the idea that they wanted to do this, they brought it forth to the council, and we approved it and made it happen, so, our youth are important, we need to retain our youth. I truly believe that we're educating our kids and they're moving out of town, and we need to retain those kids. And then we had the Lake Superior National Astrium Research Reserve dedicated. Janet, I don't know what to say other than what you've said, but the library, fantastic building, services. One of the biggest things was getting a grant from Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation. That money was used with some matching monies to buy 22 new public internet computers, which doubled what we had. A public printer and software to have a pay-for-print station with a coin app, and I'm sure everybody's used that. Another big event was to allow the farmer's market to use the parking lot every Wednesday, and they did that rain or shine, people went out there, so that was a good gesture by the library to allow that to happen, so, and I wanna take this time to congratulate you and wish you all the best of life, so. Public Works. A few of the things that I've already mentioned, but again, partnerships, and that's what we need to have. Completed the Banks Avenue construction, oh, I said 13th, it's 12th Street to Winter Street, but it was done. 60 blocks of new storm sewers, and those are the projects, Mick, that are out in Billings Park in your area and South Superior in my area, alleviating some of the problems with the stormwater and the wastewater. Those projects are a little bit more than half-done. We've had a meeting in Billings Park already with a progress report, and we're gonna have one out in South End as well, just to make sure that the citizens that were involved in this big overtaking have things the way that they were before we started, so. Broadway Street, that was resurfaced between Hammond and Ogden, that was another ERA project. East 5th Street resurfacing, that was a Mill and Overlay that I talked about earlier, that was also an ERA project. We've begun construction on the north half of South 5 at Knox and Mike landfill, and that will be complete this summer. We opened up the new Billamarty Terminal in June, and that was $1.25 million, and I said I wasn't gonna get political, but I thought it was a travesty that we couldn't get into our own building when somebody from down south came up here to speak to the press. I see Bob outside of a fence, not being able to get into a city-owned building, it's a little crazy. Completed verification of 2009 and 2010 carbon offset credits from burning landfill methane and converting the CO2, and transacted sales of credits for about $70,000. Also resurfaced Marina Drive, so. And last but not least, I'm gonna kinda read Terry's here, because I thought it was kinda good. "Well, the city clerk's office doesn't have any major projects to strut our feathers about, like sewers or pier reconstruction, and this is important. We do continually strive to improve open government and public access to service of the citizens of Superior." This council meeting is broadcast live on the computer, it's also on PAC TV, so, that was something that your department got going here a while back, and with the IT department. And council agendas, documents, minutes are all available on the city's website now, and it's just the availability, the latest means, so, you can get any information about city government on our website, so, that's the other important thing. When I thank Mayor Ness for coming over, he did it on very short notice, because I just got ahold of him via a computer this afternoon, but I think it's imperative that we recognize the partnerships that we have with Duluth, the shared things that we use, and one of the biggest ones is the harbor. And we share populations, and we share people, and we share workforces. We share police and fire when we need to, you know, because of the coastal stuff and the water stuff. So, instead of criticizing how Superior does their job or how Duluth does their job, we need to look into the future and see how Duluth can help Superior, or Duluth needs to look at Superior and see how we can help them. We both have the same wastewater and stormwater problems. Duluth has got a little different method right now that I'm happy they're doing, because it's union construction and we're putting in storage tanks, so, we're providing employment, you know, and we're providing a place for people to live, their livelihoods are here. We did have a reduction of 1/2 of a percent roughly in our population in Superior over the last 10 years, and I think that's pretty good. I would've thought the number would've been a lot higher. So, the importance of retaining our people here. I'm living proof, I was born and raised in Superior, I've never left, and this is what I like doing. I like being here, I like being a part of this community, I like being a part of the workforce that we've got, and the people that get us through the daily grind, which is your department heads and you counselors that are elected, this is important, this is a jobs that we have to do, and partnerships is a big part of it. We need to communicate with each other. We have, on the horizon right now, a terrible decrease in shared revenue, or LGAs, in Minnesota as they're called, and they're gonna affect everything that we do. So, we are going to have to lace up the bootstraps and do what we can to make this community a better community, keep people here, make good judgments, and make sure that people will wanna come here. We've got an opportunity to bring tourism to this community, the tourism director in Madison is a very energetic gal, and she has promised to include Superior in this. And this is an opinion that's mine, but I think we're at a transitional period right now where we really need to look what we've got and how to work with it. We had some uncontrollable stuff that happened in November that is gonna reflect on our city, affect our city, and how we do government business, and I don't think we want to get into cutting services by any means, we need the services that we have. Between Duluth and Superior, you know, the news is talking about potholes, we've got potholes everywhere, so, there's gonna be extra expenditures on stuff like that, that are unforeseen problems. This is one of the worst years that I've seen for stuff like that, so, we have to address those problems with positive attitude. They're there, they don't go away, so, we have to be careful with how we spend our money on that. Again, I just want to thank everybody's cooperation from the department heads. I think the vision for Superior should come from either Kevin or Bruce after April 5, and we'll all work together. I know there's some council races as well, so I wanna say good luck to all you folks. Kevin and Bruce, good luck to you, and we'll see how all that pans out. When it does, we have the existing problems, but we have the existing things that we can work on in a good manner. We've got a bright future here, and the needs of the community include the infrastructure needs, keeping our community safe. We've got a big sign on Bonaparte Tower that says that we should be living up to our name, and I think that's what we need to do, and we have to all do it together. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Olson.
Appreciate it.
At this point, nothing more to add. No, you did a very competent job, a very complete job. Thank you.
Item 12 is business by public, but we have no one to sign to speak on our business by public.
Yes, a motion to adjourn this session and then go to a committee of the whole would be in order. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. No opposed? Then we'll proceed.
Just wait the reading of the roll call.
We'll waive the reading of the roll call since we have all our, one council we're leaving shortly, but... I think I got it all.
If you're here to speak on the matter and you haven't signed up yet, there's a sign-up sheet up here.
See you, guys. Call the meeting of the committee of the whole together, and to order or no? And we'll dispense with the roll call because we're all still here. First item.
Item 1 is to review City Code Chapter 54, Article 4, key boxes. This was referred from the February 9 Public Safety Committee meeting.
Is there a motion from the council? Move to...
To what?
To start the meeting, huh? Okay. Okay, if we're gonna review this, we wanna have an action now, or do we wanna wait for the comment?
Motion to review.
Okay, motion, we'll have to review this, and we'll decide on the action appropriate at the appropriate time. Does any councilor wish to comment at this time? Councilor Henry?
Yeah, in reviewing the material that I have, I think I would like to get some clarification if I can. I remember that we passed an ordinance dealing with lock boxes, and I don't remember the exact details, but I remember we passed them in apartments of a certain size and businesses were required to have them, and in reviewing the material here, I've got the impression that part of businesses and apartments or apartment owners that would've been required to fulfill the ordinance, I've got the impression that part of them have done and part of them have not, and I'm kinda wondering if maybe Chief Reekstet or someone could comment on that, why there hasn't been total compliance, and then I know there's a lot of controversy on it, and I'm kinda wondering if the people that are opposed to it are the ones that have not complied with the lock boxes, or whether there are people that have the lock boxes where it's not working out for them, or...
Well, again, the ordinance was originally passed in 2005, it was again voted on in 2008 when the fire code was updated. There was a timeline for compliance on it, and the timeline came up here July 1 of 2010. Now, the fire department, when we go out and do a fire inspection, we inspect buildings either once or twice a year. If they're not in compliance with an ordinance, we will write them a warning, we'll go back, the next time, we'll write them another warning, and usually it takes three warnings before we start saying, okay, you've gotta get this done or you're gonna get a citation. So, we've come to that point where people have had the warnings that they're not in compliance with this ordinance. I contacted Knox Company, and as of January 26, they'd reported 761 Knox boxes had been sold in the city of Superior. Since that time, we've had many, many more people come in, get the applications, buy the Knox boxes and put them up, just in the last month, because these warnings are going out. We figure there are well over 800 Knox boxes in place at this time. We're looking at probably about approximately 1,100 that need to be put, that are required by the ordinance, and the people here complaining about it tonight are pretty much the ones that have not purchased them. We are looking, you know, we are willing to work with people if they say they don't have the money right now to purchase these Knox boxes. Give us a plan, let us know. Can you put away so much per month and have it done in six months, or nine months, 12 months? If you give us a plan, we're good with that.
Yeah, have you had occasion to use the Knox boxes where you've had a fire, and, you know, how do they, could you tell me how they work, or are you happy with them, or...
We use them on a regular basis on medical runs. With the fire department running 2,800 medical runs last year, you know, the odds that we're gonna be going to one of these landlords' apartments and having to get into an apartment using a key for a Knox box are pretty good. We had one just, not last weekend, the weekend before, the police were called to a... We had one just, not last weekend, the weekend before, the police were called to a building and on a check welfare. They called for the fire department because they could not gain access. They pounded on the door, nobody answered. We got there, and this was a building that should have had a Knox box on it, and it didn't. We wound up having to force the door, do damage to the door, and when we got in there, the patient was unconscious on the floor. We could have gotten in much quicker and started to help that patient much earlier if there'd been a Knox box on that building. And we could have done it without damaging the building, and we wouldn't have the problem of trying to secure that building once that person's loaded in an ambulance and has left.
Thank you, Chief Rickstead.
Are there any other comments from councilors?
If I could, President Finslin, I'd like to ask that the people that are signed up to speak, let them talk.
Yeah, they'll be next. I just thought if the councilors wish to... Councilor Olson?
When you said that there's 800 right now and 1,100 more, you're looking at 1,900 total then?
No, no, 1,100 total.
1,100 total. How many commercial buildings are in the city?
Somewhere between 11 and 1,200 buildings that meet the requirements of this ordinance, which is apartment buildings with more than four units and commercial buildings. It's hard to get an exact number out of our database because some buildings have more than one business in them.
And then, clarification. I have been told that bar owners and liquor stores, if they do not comply, they're not in compliance with the city code and they will not be reissued their bar license, their liquor license.
That could be a possibility somewhere down the road. Again, we're trying to get them to comply, and, I mean, if somebody just absolutely... If this ordinance stays in effect and they absolutely refuse to comply, yes, that would be a reason for them not to get their license because they would be in violation of the fire code.
Okay, what do you do with a small retail outlet that doesn't have a liquor license? The liquor licenses are, for the most part, those bar owners or those liquor stores' income. It's their livelihood, as we all have one. Let's just say the sporting goods store that's no longer in business in the Tower Avenue Plaza, what would their fine be compared... I guess what I'm trying to get at is I've got a problem with picking on a bar, I shouldn't say picking on, but excluding or going towards a bar, that the penalty would be their liquor license and keep them from making a living, as to a small retail store in, let's say, not as big of an investment, or... You follow me? I mean, the liquor store and the bar has a lot more to lose, and that may be their problem if they don't want to comply. But I don't see consistency in the enforcement of this. If I had a shoe store, what are you going to do to my business compared to a bar?
Well, again, if the ordinance stays in place, again, we would try to work with them to get compliance, and if they totally refused, they'd get a citation. And they could get a citation for every time we go back and check and they still don't have a Knox box.
Okay, but when you're saying a citation, Jim, is the citation going to be, you're going to lose your license? Are we going to get in the business of either or?
It would be a fine.
So, you would not be pulling a person's liquor license? I think that's the clarification I'm looking for.
Dan, can I clarify that?
Sure. Yep.
The ordinance states that no license shall be renewed or issued without approval of the health and building inspectors, but ultimately, that would come back to you if the fire chief or fire inspector denied the license. We would set a public hearing.
Yep, and you and I talked about this.
And ultimately, the council would have to decide whether to renew that license or not.
Okay. So, there really is no set. It would come back to the council for approval or nonapproval, and we've done that before. That's all I want to know.
Councilor Dahlbeck.
I used to have a question. If this is the case with a business owner, what is it with a landlord if he refuses? Can we pull their license too then to be a landlord?
Well, they don't have a license, but they would get a citation and have to pay a fine.
Okay, so what's their penalty other than a citation? If we could pull a bar license, what could we do other than give them a citation? I mean, that doesn't balance out.
The whole thing with the licenses on the taverns is they are required to meet fire code for us to sign off for them to have their license. If they are not meeting the fire code, we shouldn't be signing off on their license because that's what the law says. They have to meet fire code in order to have their license.
Well, what about a landlord? What's his requirements?
His requirements right now are to have the box also. If he doesn't do it, he gets a fine.
Okay.
Well, pardon me, Chief Rickstead, but isn't it also true that your department has the power to shut a business down for failure to maintain minimum compliance with fire code? I mean, if the commercial entity in question is selling shoes or trinkets, or is a five-unit apartment dwelling, and your department determines that they are failing to maintain or meet minimum fire code requirements, you could order the property vacated and closed up until they pass inspection, unless I'm missing something about what I understand your department's powers to be?
Correct. We don't use those powers very often. Very rarely are they used.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to point out that I think that your department can go as far as to shut a business down until they can demonstrate to you, to your satisfaction, that they're meeting code requirements, and that certainly is a different flavor of consequence than the risk of a monetary penalty. I don't mean to insert myself into this dialogue, I was just trying to... I think that's the case.
Councilor Dahlbeck still has the floor.
That's what I was getting at. I mean, it was still even out then. You could pull their rental license, just like you could pull a liquor license, if they did not meet the requirements.
We could vacate the building.
Right, you could. Okay, that's what I was getting at. Thank you.
Councilor Eric.
Yeah, Chief Counsel of Education, if you have to go in and break down a door, okay, and who's responsible to replace that door and secure the, let's say, an apartment? Whose responsibility would that be? Is it the fire department, or is it the person owning that structure?
The person owning the structure. Generally, the fire department, if we do have to break down a door, enter a building for an emergency, we will try to secure that prior to our leaving if the key holder is not there.
Thank you.
Councilor Mertzick.
Well, I have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. First question is, how many medical... How many calls do you go on annually? Like, how many calls were last year?
Just over 3,000.
Just over 3,000. And typically, I would imagine that you are in a situation where you need to breach a door, kick a door in for... to get into an emergency, is that correct?
Yep, on a regular basis.
In both residential individual homes and apartments, right?
Correct.
And I guess, having said that, or understanding that, I guess I don't understand the difference between an apartment home and a single occupancy home, or somebody's owned home. I would think that if you're going to kick in a door, if you were to kick in a door for safety reasons at a private residence, I guess I just... Can you make it a little more clear to me how it would be any different at an apartment? Because the, I guess, the line of... I guess the way that I understand this is if you're going to enter a home, I don't see any difference between an apartment or a regular house. Do you understand where I'm going with this, Chief?
Yes, and the state has made that determination, the Department of Commerce, as to which buildings that we have to inspect for fire safety. We do not inspect private homes. We do not inspect duplexes. The State Department of Commerce tells us we have to inspect apartment buildings and businesses.
Okay, then, so the keys to gain entry to these buildings are more for inspection purposes than not emergency purposes?
No, no. We will not use the keys to gain access to do inspections unless we have a signed waiver from the building owner. We have some building owners that live out of town, that it's very difficult to get them there to do an inspection, and some of them have signed waivers allowing us to use the keys to go in and do inspections. Of course, we don't inspect individual apartments. We only inspect the public areas, furnace rooms, laundry areas, things like that.
Okay, so, I guess, can you be a little bit more clear? Is the state saying that we need to have these Knox boxes in place? Or is this... To my understanding, this is a city ordinance, that the city has decided that it would be appropriate to put these boxes in certain businesses and buildings. Is that correct?
That's correct. Other states have passed the ordinance statewide. Wisconsin has not. We were proactive and decided to pass it here within the city of Superior.
Okay, then, my other concern is that we're reviewing this code right now to determine whether or not we're going to keep it, unassuming, right? Is that what we're doing with this?
That'll be a decision by the council, what we do at this point.
Right. My other concern then is that the chief had mentioned that over 800 people bought, or businesses rather, bought this Knox box. For how much do the boxes cost, Chief?
They start at about $180 and go up from there.
Okay. So, my concern is that, you know, we've made it the law to have these, and 800-plus people have bought them here in Superior, and then we make it not necessary, and that's, I guess that's concerning. So, two concerns. One, we're kind of damned if we do, damned if we don't. We keep this code, make businesses buy them, I guess my concern with that, again, and I'm going to be a little redundant here, is that I don't see a difference between holding the same standard to private residences as I do the business. If you have a key, if the simple reason is to not kick the door in, then you should be requesting that every building in Superior has a master key that the fire department holds, and so they don't have to breach the door. Do you follow what I'm saying there, Chief? How do you respond to that?
Oh, I'd love to see them on all residential, on all buildings, but I don't think that that's, again, something that can be done with a person's own private residence. When you've got a multiple-unit apartment building and somebody is having... has a fire in their unit, it's impacting everybody else that's in that building, not just that one unit that they're in. We had a... Last Friday night, we had a call to an apartment building, again, a building that should have had a Knox box on it. We got there, you could smell smoke in the hallway. It was definitely a smell of burned food. We determined which apartment it was coming from. We pounded on the door to that apartment. Nobody answered. Pound it and pound it. Finally, we were seconds away from breaking the door down, and the person opened the door. Now, we didn't know if that person was in there, had started something cooking on that stove, and then had become unconscious and was going to burn the building down. There are other people in other apartments in that building that were being put at risk by us not being able to get into that apartment.
Yeah, I just would like to say, I hear what you're saying, and I guess to a certain extent, it makes sense with me, but the only argument, again, that I'm going to have is that if you respond to a home that's, you know, there's smoke coming out of the window, and, you know, you don't have a key to that home because it's a private residence, and there very well could be neighbors that are at risk, or there could be young kids in the house that are asleep. So, regardless of the scenario, there's lives in jeopardy, and, you know, in that case, you would have to breach the door. So, I guess I'm still not entirely convinced that an apartment is any different than a home at this point.
According to the state, it's considered a public building.
Mr. McKenzie.
First off, Chief, you're not going to get me when I'm in front of my house. And then, the other comment that I have, I keep hearing the cost of these things, and that thing changes on a daily basis. And I know that, I know that they're not under $200. I know some people who had called me up and asked me about them, and they told me ultimately the least amount was $250, and I think they go as high as $500. I think we need to find out exactly how much these things are really costing, or at least so that everybody knows about it.
There is one option, which is less than $200. It's considered a residential box, and we've been recommending that to people. The problem with the residential box is it will only hold two keys. If you have more than two keys to put in it, the residential-style box won't work for you.
Okay. I guess I've got another question as well. I think at the public safety meeting, we had, well, we had a pretty extensive conversations there, and one of the questions was, what if one of these master keys, you know, and I believe that there's going to be eight of them for the entire city, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. But there was a concern that, you know, what if one of these things got lost, and that can happen? You know, it could be dropped in the snow, or dropped down the sewer or something. What was the exact cost of having to rekey boxes because of that concern?
The cost from Knox Company to rekey the boxes is $15 per box.
So, we're talking... I can't do math that fast. So, that's a concern of mine. That's, I think somebody said that that was a reasonable amount. I think 15,000 is still a lot of money. And as long as I still have the floor, if that's okay, I have one other question. It's kind of a, I guess it would be a legal question, because I hear a lot of these things coming from the landlords about the legality of, you know, once that they rent, you know, an apartment to someone, and they hand them their key, that's their property. It's like their home. And I'm just wondering what the legality is of being able to take that key and, in essence, give it to someone else, which would be the fire department, you know, by putting this key in a box outside, and whether it can be broken into or not, I don't know, but you're still providing a key to someone else. Again, I wouldn't want that personally for my house, so... Does anybody know the answer to that question? If that's legal or not to give a key away?
Well, I certainly would have a great deal of confidence in defending any charge based on the legality of a Knox box key being used by emergency responders for access in emergency situations. I mean, there are literally thousands of municipalities across the country. Whether this ordinance is destined to survive this evening or next council meeting or not, there are thousands of municipalities across the country who do have similar, if not identical, ordinances, and these have been tested. And I don't foresee any successful legal challenge to the existence or the requirement of a key like this, or a key box, or a vault like this, for the purposes that have been identified by the fire department to access what has been described as basically commons areas in public buildings. Obviously, the individual units won't be in play for these keys for access to those units.
But do you know of anything that's... I know that's what you're saying, and that's maybe your opinion, but do you have any idea that there's anything written as far as Wisconsin law, as far as giving a key away?
Well, it's always the most difficult to prove a negative. Can you show me where, you know, that someone tried to take down the legality of the Knox box, and it didn't work for the person attacking the...
of the Knox box, and, and it didn't work for the person attacking the legality of the Knox box? So, I don't have that authority for you right here, I can't cite you, chapter and verse, uh, anything that would speak to that, uh, directly on point, there might be case law, um, all over the place, uh, but I think it's a, rest assured, it's a, it's a, it's a widely accepted, um, proposition from a legal standpoint, that these, these matters, uh, would be sustained from legal challenge.
And I'm, and I guess my question is, you know, not if something did happen, I'm, if, if, if nothing, nothing happened, the key was given out, uh, but, but nothing ever happened, the fire department never, never had to, had to use it, but just the idea of, you know, is this legal to, to do this in the first place?
I don't know how to answer it, um, without repeating what I said just a moment ago, which is, I would have every confidence that if the Knox box ordinance were challenged on the basis that you've described, that we would prevail into those circumstances. I, I, I sense that my answer isn't satisfactory to you, Councilor McKenzie, but, but I have, for what it's worth, a great deal of confidence in the legality of the requirement from a safety standpoint. Keep in mind, you were asking about, about something directly on point from a Wisconsin case or to Wisconsin law, I don't know what you, what exactly you described, but keep in mind that the state of Wisconsin is vested with a wide range of latitude, or scope, or discretion, in how it affects local government, uh, cities like Superior are, are accommodated a lot of discretion, how they affect local government in the, in the, in the safety of, or in the spirit of protecting the safety and welfare of its citizens. So, there are a wide range of safety precautions, um, designed to protect citizens, um, from catastrophe, illness, uh, name, name your, name your disaster, um, that, that Wisconsin municipalities are armed, uh, to address through, through a legislative process, which is how, which is what you do when you write, um, code and code provisions. So this, this is something I have every confidence, uh, would sustain a wide range of, of attack, uh, from a legal standpoint. I, I obviously can't help you with the policy considerations, but, uh, please, please don't hear anything that I'm saying as other than, um, I would, I would have our, uh, our money on us if, if a challenge like the one you're describing were to be made, and I could probably even find, uh, something out there where, where these, where it has, um, been contested in some environment, perhaps not Wisconsin, but somewhere.
Bearing in mind that we have a number of people in the audience who wish to speak, with any other councilors who wish to speak now, Mr. Merzick?
Just one more quick question, actually, Mr. Perel, I have a, one additional question for you. Has, have we seen any litigation, or has the city of Superior ever been found liable in your time here for either the fire or the police breaching private property in, in, you know, in, in, uh, if there's an emergency-type situation, uh, like a fire or a health risk? Anytime that law enforcement or, or the fire department, in, in your time here, has the city been sued for, for them entering a, a private, uh, building? I, I can't think of any scenario where the city has been sued successfully for an allegation of damage to property by our fire or police departments. Okay, and so in light of that, I, I think that it might be appropriate to, to have this be a, a voluntary thing, you know, if you can volunteer, even as a, if, if you're, even a private residence on the outside of your house, you could voluntarily put a, a Knox box on the outside of your house. Uh, if, we're not being sued for kicking in a door if somebody's having a medical emergency, what, I guess, this just seems like, uh, an, an additional unnecessary step to me.
Councilor Bender?
Yes, I'll, I'll make, I'll make this quick, I'm just, uh, I'll ask, uh, Chief Rigstad, if you wanna go back to 2005 and explain the, and, and of course, I've heard it, because I'm on public safety, as are a number of others, and, and a number of other people have heard it, but, like I always say, for the 15 people watching at home, can you explain the original rationale for the need of the Knox boxes?
Well, again, the need for the Knox box is just the fact that we do go to so many, so many incidents, and we get there, uh, whether it be a smoke in the building for a commercial building, we've had instances with water mains broken in commercial buildings, and if we have to sit and wait for a key holder to show up, it's taking us a lot of time, we're, um, taking ourselves away from possibly, uh, responding to other emergencies. Uh, we also go to a lot of medical runs where the person is down in their apartment, and if we can use a Knox bo, a key out of the Knox box to get in and access that person and start care on that person, the faster we can do that, the better for that patient. Um, and again, there's, we don't create the damage to the building.
Well, I also meant, could you, um, enumerate about how many keys that, that you were carrying, that the fire department was carrying at that time, and that, that was another part of this?
Well, yeah, um, prior to the Knox box ordinance, um, we were carrying well over 200 keys on our trucks, they were just kept in a key box, there was problems keeping track of them, there was problems, a real liability problem with us running around with all those keys in our truck. With the Knox box system, we have one key, it's kept in a key safe on our truck, we can open that Knox box and gain access with the keys that are inside the Knox box. Um, prior to the ordinance in 2005, we had over 40 buildings in town that already had Knox boxes, people who were progressive, forward-thinking, and said, "Yeah, this is a good idea for my building."
Thanks. Councilor Olson?
Just real quick as well, was there ever any, uh, other besides the Knox box in the United States, or in Europe, or anything like that? I, I, I think that it's a little crazy that I get an email from some guy that doesn't wanna give his address or his name to me, and when I tell him that I don't respond to mail that's not signed, he sends me back the email with this big presentation, and it's the salesman for Knox. Now, when we put in an ordinance in 2005 and, and adjusted it in 2008, um, was there any other, you know, was there, I mean, was there a Chevy and a Ford, or was there just a Cadillac?
Well, the Knox box itself, um, is UL certified for, as an anti-theft device. Uh, in doing a search for similar, um, products, I don't see anything else that meets the security of a Knox box. There are some that are made out of thinner sheet metal, um, they're basically designed as gate opener, electric, for electric switches for gate openers, uh, they're 14-gauge metal. The Knox box is quarter-inch solid steel, the door is half-inch solid steel, they're UL-listed, um, I've got a link for a test showing them being beaten with a 10-pound sledgehammer, somebody trying to take them off of the wall, and they don't come off if they're mounted correctly. It's, it's the most secure thing to put the keys for a building in.
At this point, I'd like to open it up for comments by the public, and remind people that we're going to limit you to a three-minute presentation. First person that signed up is Dee Fetters.
And folks, I, I'm, I'm the unlucky fellow in charge of flailing my arms around and whatnot when we're at the three-minute mark, so if you think you need more time than that, I would suggest you ask the council to grant you that extension, and perhaps if you do so before you begin your speech, you can do it without, uh, interrupting yourself.
If you see I'm running over, I would appreciate the extra three minutes. I have a little throat problem, I'm gonna try to be brief. I'm here to speak.
I have to ask the council if that's something they want.
Will you extend?
I'll make, I'll make a motion, so that's, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Maids and secretary, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passed.
Thank you. I have some good news and some bad news, actually, with the Knox boxes. I am for the Knox boxes for high-rises with the elderly, people that can't get up and around by themselves. I called my insurance company, and I asked them if they're going to up our rates. I was lucky, they said, "No, they won't." I wanna know where the money's going, so I want all my i's dotted and my t's crossed, I said I would like that in writing. They gave it to me in writing. For the third time, I went back to my renters. I've got two of them that if this goes into effect are moving, and they're gonna challenge me in court, and I've got the best renters in town. They said, "We have a contract with you, Dee, we don't have a contract with the city." I said, "It's an ordinance." I got my building, uh, just three years ago, and when I found out there was this ordinance, I went right out and bought the box, $250 and $35 for shipping. I followed the rules. I didn't see a lot in the newspaper about this, to explain to people exactly what it is. When I started asking questions, is when I said, "Whoa, let's wait a minute." Now, a question was asked, "What can we do to landlords that don't comply?" I find that very strange. So, we have 300 businesses that may not comply, uh, let's say that the liquor licenses are held over their head, the other businesses, "Why don't we just shut 'em down, that's gonna be great for Superior, that's gonna be terrific, we don't have it rough enough here, we're gonna start shutting down businesses." I believe in Duluth, that it's, like it is in Duluth, I believe, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, it should be a voluntary thing. I have, I do not have geriatric people in my building. If there are people that have them in their building, geriatric people, people that can't get around, people that they're afraid will need these, I think this should be a voluntary thing. And like, again, I'll tell you, I bought my box, I comply with everything that I'm asked to comply with, but somewhere along the line, you just gotta back off a little bit, and let us try to provide housing that is affordable, that complies as well as we can. I went out today and bought all CO2 detectors, complied in that respect, I think it's a good thing. I don't want my people to get hurt, you just gotta back off a little bit. We are not, my money comes into my hand, it says, "Hello, Dee," and it's gone. It goes, "We're not bad people, landlords, I am not a slumlord, and I will never be a slumlord, and I'm doing the best I can, I am dancing as fast as I can to do things good for my people that are in the building." I think this should be a voluntary thing. Um, I don't like the idea of "do it or else," I don't think that's fair, and I think in the end, we're a good city. I think, instead of working against each other, I think we should work together. You know, I'm giving affordable housing, I even lowered my rents, so people aren't under bridges, we're not a city like that, and, uh, I just think this needs a, a little bit more thought. I wanna thank you for your attention, and hopefully this can be settled to everyone's satisfaction.
Marty Curtis?
Marty Curtis, 5301 East First Street, and I guess I'll ask for, uh, I'll try to keep it short, 'cause I know you got a lot of people, but I guess I'll ask for more than three minutes, too, if that's possible?
I'll make that motion. Is that a blanket motion, or is that for each and everyone, rather than go through this each time? Okay, so...
You could see a cap at six minutes then, right? Is that...
You want a cap at six minutes?
I think that would be appropriate, I, I mean, I think six minutes is adequate.
I think we gotta cap at a something.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta cap at a something.
Okay, the, the motion maker, uh, you started it, Mr. McKenzie?
Uh, well, I, I spoke with Frog about this one time, and I made, made a suggestion, uh, I don't know if he remembers or not, but, uh, if, um, I feel that if the people wanna ask for that, uh, time upfront, uh, then, you know, it's five minutes, and then, and then we just ask you at that point, you, you'll have the time to finish up your sentence, so you may end up with five minutes and 45 seconds, something like that, so, if you ask for more time, it's, it's five minutes.
My, my sense is that this is a committee meeting, and, uh, not the typical, uh, council meeting, so we are acting as a committee of the whole, and we can alter those rules during a committee, as, as we typically do. So is there a limit you wish to put on this, or...
About six minutes then.
The motion's made, uh, made, limited, please, please don't, you don't have to go longer than that. Is there a second to that motion?
I second that, we can still exercise our right to allow them to speak longer than six minutes, right?
Yeah, on six minutes, if it has individual motion, okay. Does everybody understand that now, Mr. Olson?
We just wasted two minutes.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, is this part of my time?
Right, right, absolutely. Okay, I, I think I understand the motion to be that we'll allow people up to six minutes and without any extension, and then we can go further from that. That's the motion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Mr. Curtis, sorry, sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you, Council President Finzel. And, uh, Councilor Olson, I'd like to thank you for the, uh, State of the City address, uh, that was, actually, uh, you know, usually it's pretty rosy, and I think you gave it to us kind of the way it is, so I appreciate that. Uh, the Knox boxes, and I won't go all, over all the results, but most of the people are in favor of being voluntary, very few want these things shoved down their throats. Um, one of the things that, that I think all you councilors should be paying attention to, and the landlords have been telling me the same thing, and the businesses now told me that with the survey that I did, everybody thinks the city keeps passing ordinances that drive up costs and make it hard for everybody. We really have to watch that, if we're gonna turn the economy of the city around, we have to do something different in that area. We can't keep forcing people to go someplace else. And, uh, you know, I, I listened to things, and, uh, we were talking about, "Well, what can we do to landlords if they don't put up the Knox box?" The solution was making people homeless. I gotta tell you, this bothers me, to empty out a building because a landlord doesn't have a Knox box. There should be a better solution than that. I mean, kick the door in. Most of the landlords say that, most of the businesses have said that. "If you wanna come in, we don't have a Knox box, please kick the door in." Um, you know, I probably won't get questions answered, but, but I was curious if the chief could answer, excluding, uh, elderly high-rises, how many doors were kicked in in the last year, for medical reasons? I'm guessing that's a no? No comment? I'm guessing, uh, if you exclude all the elderly high-rises, that number is quite a bit lower than what you guys would think. It, uh, you know, with the, the whole thing being voluntary, while I was out campaigning, I saw a house with a Knox box on it. Was kinda surprised, so when I knocked on the door, I asked the gentleman, and it was an elderly gentleman, he came to the door, and I chatted with him for a couple of minutes, and I said, "Why do you have a Knox box out there?" He says, "Well, my wife has a medical condition, and I have concerns for it, so I bought one and put it up." Seems like a fairly reasonable thing, if you want one, you can have one. And, uh, I've heard the chief talking about, uh, no inspections done using the Knox box keys. I've had landlords contact me, and businesses, and say, "They were inspected using the Knox box key." So I don't know, there's differences there. Um, did you know, the, uh, the chief talked about which buildings they should be on? Okay, the ordinance says five or more units. The chief says public buildings, which is three or more. So if you live in a triplex or duplex, your life is less important, I mean, it's still a public building, but they randomly chose an area. I have no reason, no ideal why, but they randomly chose five. Um, and there's one more thing I wanted to point out, and this is basically, specifically in the 10th district. I had 13 businesses down there that said, uh, that they won't, that, uh, they answered yes to the question, "Do you not speak out on this issue?" For fear of reprisal. 13 businesses down there. I only had one in the 2nd district. I'm thinking, uh, that this is all the bar businesses up and down the street and tower, in different locations down there. They're all scared that they're gonna be put out of business if they don't put up a box, and if they do put up a box, they're all scared that that box will disappear off of the bar at 2:00 in the morning after closing time, and then somebody will come back and break into the bar. And what happens there is if you own a bar, and you have receipts with credit card numbers and all that stuff on there, and somebody gets access to them, that bar will be liable. So, is, is this what we wanna do, is encourage, uh, businesses to go elsewhere? I, I just, I, I have a lot of problems with this, with the businesses. It, it really seems like, uh, we're not watching out for the businesses. You know, in my flyer, I say we should be business-friendly. How are we business-friendly if we just keep adding more and more costs onto 'em, asking them to take more and more risks? You know, voluntary, okay, that seems like a good idea. You know, if somebody wants one, have 'em put 'em up. Elderly high-rise units, you know, you have a lot of elderly people in a very small area, sure, I can see that, you know, the odds of them having medical calls is high. If you got a key, and you want the fire department to have it, buy a Knox box, put it in the box. It, it, and the chief is right about that, it doesn't make much sense for him to have 200 keys in the rigs. By the time, uh, they get the right key, they could've kicked in the door four times already, and, uh, so I see that, it doesn't make any sense to do that. So if you wanna have the fire department have a key, buy a Knox box. I don't think I even used up six minutes, guys.
No, just... No, I just got five. Thanks, Marty. Uh, Gary Shaver's next.
Uh, Gary Shaver, 605 Coming, I'm a true Nord Ender. Uh, the reason stated, I like the Knox box idea with proper administration. Now, uh, in the paper, it was stated that the building inspectors and the battalion chiefs were gonna have keys. Is that to be carried on them, or are they going to be taking the keys out of, having keys to the access to the box in the truck?
The building inspectors don't have any keys. The fire inspectors, there's a key in the fire inspector's truck, it's kept in a safe. The battalion chief, there's a key in his truck, it's kept in a safe.
Okay, they're not gonna be personally carried, then?
No.
Okay. In case of a lost key, and the locks all have to be changed, who stands the expense of that?
If one of the master keys is lost, we'd first, of course, have to do some, do a determination, you know, where it was lost, how it was lost. Do we think it was stolen? Was it, you know, is it a threat? If it, if we feel it's a threat to the boxes, then the, the fire department would pay for the cost of rekeying the boxes.
Who makes that determination, then? You know, there's, uh, when you have a, when you have something get lost, uh, there can be things written that maybe didn't happen, and, uh, that's what I'm concerned about, is who, who's gonna be responsible for making that decision as to whether the city pays or we pay?
Well, there's no way that somebody with a box would have to pay to have it rekeyed. The question is, is whether we would rekey all of them or not. If we thought that there was a threat that that key would get into hands, that would use it, um, for illegal purposes, then we would rekey every box in the city.
Okay. I've been in contact with the top three fire inspectors in the city of Duluth, including the chief inspector, and, uh, what they have done over there is, uh, the, any key is in the fire truck, and the fire truck only, and, uh, with the, uh, person in charge having the key, so it's very similar to what we're looking at here. Uh, the thing on the compliance, who complies, they have a, uh, their rules over there, that if you have a, uh, fire suppression system, or a fire signaling system, that you're required to have the Knox box, and that anything that's tied into the city, and then some of the high rises and stuff. Now, if you go and look at the small businesses in Duluth, very few got them. I know I deal quite a bit in Duluth, there are things I can't get over here, and, uh, very, very few, I, I have yet to see one in a business I deal with that has, and, uh, so I would like to see this put on a voluntary basis. Most of us are independent businessmen, and are setting here. Uh, when you put something in, you get a lot further by taking and trying to sell your people on using it, rather than shoving it down their throats, and that's what we feel happened with this Knox box thing. Go out and sell it. Now, uh, Jim said there was 200 keys in the truck. There's 200 people, obviously, that would, would like to have that, or that are using it, and, uh, let, uh, you know, the high rises and stuff, and the old people place, I can see that. But the small businesses in town here, I think should be given a choice as to whether they want them or not. Now, to me, it should be up to the fire department and the inspectors to go out and say, look, we feel you should have one, this is why you should have one, this is how it helps us. Sell it to us, rather than shove it down their throats. It'll make every, it'll make your jobs as councillors easier, and it'll make the fire department's jobs easier. And, all too often, regulatory gets in to the shoving it down their throats thing, and, uh, this is where we have the problem. I'm getting old, I have to refer to notes. I got three years on councillor, uh, uh, Finzeland, and we were discussing that before tonight. Maybe a citizens committee could be organized, or could be appointed, to work with the fire department on implementing this. But, uh, when I talked to Duluth, there'd been no contact with anyone over here to see what they had done. Now, the thing that threw me a little bit was the thing that was in the paper, and that's why I asked the question on the keys. Let's see. I think that's what I have. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Shaver. Next person would be Bob Brown.
Uh, good evening, my name's Bob Brown, I live at 422 Fisher. I'm just here as a concerned citizen. Uh, I've talked to, uh, the Landlords Association, I attended one of their meetings, uh, I've talked to, uh, quite a few of the businesses, uh, down in the North End, and I, I've just talked to some citizens, uh, and I have talked to some fire experts, uh, and, uh, they all pretty much agree that, that this ordinance should come back to the council, and it should be further discussed and looked at, and, uh, get all concerned people at a table, and, uh, ta-take another look at it, uh, for the fairness of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The next person to speak would be Carl Miller.
Um, and I am actually here not as myself, but rather as the East End Business Group, and with that, I had several people out in the East End Business District that did come to me and wonder what we can do about this, and, um, so I took it upon myself as president of the East End Business Group to go through the East End Business District and come up with, um, a little poll. Of that poll, and I will, uh, take myself out of it, I, I left myself as a neutral party, so I polled 20. Of the 20, um, only two had the box installed. One was voluntary, and that, uh, would've been Northland Fire and Safety, and that would, would make a lot of sense. Um, all others did not, um, feel that they wanted this, and all of them applauded the fire department, they all felt that it should be more on a voluntary-type basis, and they most, um, had the concern of the safety and things that have already been brought up, such as, uh, if a key is lost, then what happens? Is it, uh, in the wrong hands? Or, um, several would be in the category of either like a medical-type provider, or somebody with other protected information, and they were concerned about the safety with, with that information. And so, they pretty much wanted me to come here and, uh, relay that information to you as councillors, if you are revisiting this, that they, um, would like it more on a voluntary-type basis. So, thank you.
Uh, Carl?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Miller, Mr. Bridge?
Uh, how do you feel?
In my 21 years of, of having a business out there, you know, I, thank God, I have not had to have a door kicked in, and during that whole time, I have had my phone numbers and call list of myself and other employees that have keys, um, listed with the, the city, with the, um, police and the fire department, so they can get ahold of me. And, under that also, is that, that understanding that if they cannot get ahold of me, and they need to get in the building, break the window, or go in through the door. So, um, I, personally, I would actually prefer that it was on, uh, a voluntary basis so, also.
Councilor Merzick?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that, uh, Dr. Miller is, is not just the chair of the East End Business, Business District, but he's also a bit of a miracle worker. He fixed my back a couple weeks ago, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Next person to speak would be Mark Mannion.
Uh, yes, hello, I'm Mark Mannion, 12 Bridgewater Drive. Um, first of all, I find it a little offensive that I own a business, and you made the comment that, uh, you wouldn't let one be put on the front of your house. I treat my business just like I treat my house, it's the same thing. I, I don't know why I would be different. Um, we, we try, we do have one on, but I really don't like the key out there. It, it doesn't interest me. Um, they have the right to break down the door if there's a fire, but, uh, I, I'm concerned for the city in that, uh, eight keys, how many people handling, you lose one to two a year, that's $30,000. Um, that's a little steep for the city of Superior, I think. And if you say, we'll do a study to see who, or, uh, if we feel we lost the key, and nobody will decide if it fell into the wrong person's hands, I'd like to know. And I, I would assume you would notify everyone that has their lockbox on their building at that point. Uh, they deserve to know that they're at risk. So, I think it's a much bigger problem. The other thing that did come up that I thought was a little bit interesting, there's about 5,000 apartments. Now, I think Mr. Pearl said that the landlord would not be responsible to give the apartment keys to the, uh, to the fire department, that would be the apartment owners. Is that how I took that?
I'm sorry, I, my, my thought was, or my impression is, that the fire department doesn't expect to receive any keys that would provide direct access to an individual unit within a larger apartment complex.
Is that the way it is?
No, the, the ordinance calls for keys for all locked doors within a building.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought I'd heard in the Public Safety Committee debate that the access was to the common areas. So, my, my mistake, my apology.
No, that, the access to the common areas only is if the person would sign a waiver for us to do fire inspections using the keys in the Knox box. We would not go into private, into private apartments, just the common areas.
So, what I'm seeing here is you dealing with 5,000 individuals now, instead of just the landlords, um, because it would be necessary for them. I mean, if you won't give up the key to your house, they don't have to give up the key to their apartment, and the landlord does not have the right to do that. Uh, I see an awful lot of expenses here that are just outrageous, uh, for the fire department. Just dealing with 5,000 keys, let's say that turns once a year, that's 10,000 people. You know, uh, people don't live in apartments forever all the time, so there's just a lot of expenses here that I think have been overlooked. But, I, I think it should be a voluntary system, I understand your needs as a fire department, but I, I don't think it's fair to, to look at businesses any different than you look at residential houses. There, there are livelihood, there, there are, for most of us, there are kids, too. You know, it's part of it, we, we live it every day, it's a business. So, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mannion. Uh, next person to speak would be John Mahan.
Uh, I'm John Mahan, I live at 1E Hayes Court. Um, I'm gonna speak on two different issues, or as two different individuals. First of all, I own a company called Great Lakes Electrical Equipment in the North End, it's 320 Baxter Avenue. We've been broken into by people stealing wire from us approximately 30 times in the last 20 years. At nights and on weekends, there's nobody around. The police don't protect us, just because, you know, it's impossible to patrol, patrol it. Uh, there's been one person convicted in the 30 years, and that person I caught, myself. You know, I identified him. Um, I don't disagree with the fire department that for buildings like the Board of Trade Building, there should be a key for access into the building. On security locked apartment buildings, there should be a key to access the public areas. Uh, buildings that are open, no, I don't think so. Um, I, I did a survey, uh, and identified the universe that I was going to survey before I did it, and I sent out an email to various people. Uh, from the, from the Jubilee Plaza to Belknap and Tower, up to North End, there's 140, uh, buildings in that area. 61 of them, when we did the survey, were in compliance. That's, I believe, uh, 43%. Marty said that he did, uh, a survey for compliance, his survey was 40, 41%. Uh, Mr. Miller and I hadn't heard that before, his compliance was, I think, 20%. If you do a calculation, uh, it isn't 1,000 businesses, if you do a, um, the, uh, ratio, there's 1,800 Knox boxes that are required. Um, you know, as far as the reliability, I have some articles that I researched in 2005. Here's a series of break-ins. In 2006 in San Francisco, there's one, in 2010, there's 29 robberies of Knox boxes. Uh, in 2010, here's another one, in 2010, here's a burglary by, by the fire department, breaking into two places. Here's a rape of five women in New York City by the fire department. Um, if it wasn't a problem, I have two articles, one from the hospitality industry, and one from Silver Consulting, addressing the weakness of Knox boxes, they're, they're the ultimate. I have a, I have a letter from Otis McGee Gustafson saying, my insurance is gonna go up possibly if it, uh, if it, uh, we put in a Knox box. I have a letter from, or an email from Mr. Pearl, I believe, and it says, and I'll quote, "I doubt that a landlord would have the right to give keys to access, for access to individuals' units, to other than the person having, leasing the unit. If the tenant wants to have a key to his or her own unit in the box, he or she, or he slash she, might be able to ta-talk to the fire department into allowing it, but I haven't spoken with Chief Rigstad about the topic." You know, from his, from the city attorney's own words, the ordinance that you have is illegal. Thank you.
Let's be clear about something, I never said that the ordinance was illegal. I misspoke.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
And I owned that.
Okay.
Several minutes ago, when I was speaking with the chief.
I, okay, the quote was, "I doubt that a landlord would have the right to give keys to, for access to individual units, to other than the person leasing the unit." That's correct?
Yes, and again, I have misspoken.
Okay.
That, that is a misspeak on my part, and, and to that end, I am guilty of, um, hazarding, uh, a guess, at an answer from a councillor that came to me via email today, uh, when I probably should've put that councillor off for maybe another day or two or three, um, so that I could, uh, reread Chapter 54. That didn't happen, and I misspoke, and I apologize if that misled you, uh, between, uh, the late morning hours of today and this meeting. But I wanna be clear with the notion that I have never suggested that our Chapter 54, or any portion thereof, is illegal.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
And I remain committed to that mindset tonight, as we speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mahan. Councilor Bender?
Yes, I just wanted to, to clarify that, uh, I had attended a landlord's meeting recently, and there had been a question about that, so I, I sent that question to the city attorney, and like he said, he, he, um, he spoke from the way that he understood it, and I think we, we have to, um, take his word for it, that, um, as he said, he, he owned, he owned that expression, and, um, and, but he did not say in any way, shape, or form that the ordinance as it stands now is illegal.
As all the people that have signed up to speak at this point, uh, any comments from the councillors? Councilor Merzick, edge of the room.
We made a motion to, to review this city code. Uh, are we gonna vote tonight to, to strike this code from our, our list, from our ord, from our city code, or, uh, can, can I make a motion right now?
I believe no action is required at this time. Uh, this is a review of this, and no action would be required. If there's a motion made by this committee of the whole, then it would come before the council at a later time for action.
I make a motion that we make this, uh, on a volunteer basis only, at this point.
Councilor Bridge?
Well, you know, there's a couple things, I, I guess I started this, but I started this because I got a call from somebody that, uh, you know, lived in a different councillor's district, and that person was told that it should be somebody...
Point of order, you got a motion on the floor, you need a second or it dies.
There was no second, and, uh, I thought he was making a second when I saw his light on, but, uh...
No, I just hollered.
Okay, is there a second to Councilor Merzick's motion, I guess?
Second. Well, then I'm gonna make a motion... Well, then I'm going to make a motion to refer it back to the Public Safety Committee, which would take precedence, and I'd just like to make a comment.
Just to make this clear, you made, Councilor Merzick made a motion to repeal this, or to make it voluntary? And you seconded that motion?
Voluntary or repeal it?
He said make it voluntary. Is that the...
Well, in essence, it would be a repeal of the ordinance. We don't use ordinances to express interests or hopes that people will do or not do something. Ordinances are used to express, to direct or prohibit certain conduct, and to impose a consequence for failure to do so. So, I just want to be clear that the legal effect for, in essence, making this Knox box possession or installation a voluntary phenomenon, it will be a repeal of those components of Chapter 54 that address Knox box requirements.
Then, my motion is to repeal this city code, ordinance 54, Article 54.
That's the understanding of the secondor?
Second.
Okay. And at this point, that will discuss that motion. Councilor Bridge?
Well, as I was about to say, I, I'll just get to the point, I guess. I mean, there's a couple of things I think I could see changing here, like the need to have interior keys seems like something that's a big sticking point in, in most apartment buildings. I think you'd have a lot easier time getting through the interior doors than the exterior ones. I don't, I don't know that that's necessary, but, you know, having as many people that have complied as have, and then repealing this, doesn't necessarily seem like a real good idea to me. But I'd like to make a motion to refer it back to the Public Safety Committee in the hopes that they could actually, being as that's, certain council members committees, and they should be experts on the issues in that committee, to make a decision and bring it back to the council. And I'm going to make that motion.
Motion to refer, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilor Henry. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer? That would be an appropriate discussion at this point. Councilor Henry, have your light on.
Yeah, I don't feel we ought to totally repeal it, but I think that there might be some details that, that could be changed. And I think that that could take place very well in the Public Safety Committee, which I think this came from to us. It wasn't referred to us from Public Safety? Right. And I think it should go back there, and I think that there may be some details that could be changed on it, but I think it, it would be a very involved, lengthy thing, and I think it should be dealt with by individuals that, that deal with, with that type of thing on, on an ordinary basis, which that committee does.
Councilor McKenzie?
Yeah, in regards to the referral during that time, if this goes back to the committee, and, you know, it's, it's a long process, and then it has to come back to the council, I would just ask that Chief Rigstad, or whoever's in charge of that, that no one get fined during this, this period while this is being, you know, re-looked at. Would that be, could you do that?
As long as it's being looked at, we can hold off on that. We will still be, you know, our inspection reports are computer-generated. When it says that there is no Knox box on the building, the computer generates a report, and it'll, it'll come out and say they're being warned that, that a citation is due, but there aren't any citations ever written that don't come across my desk.
Okay, okay, that's good. Thanks. I just wanted to make sure of that.
Councilor Olson?
And those are 30-day, the warrant, or the, the ticket is computer-oriented for 30 days, compliance, and we will be waiving those.
Yes.
Because I know there's some people in the audience, one had a date of yesterday for compliance, one had one tomorrow, and I understand it was because of the date that your, your people inspected the building.
It depends when the building was inspected.
Okay. The only other comment that I have, Jim, is we should be real careful saying that the fire department will pay $15,000 for lost keys, when it would need to go through the finance committee, and if it's going to come out of your budget, if you're going to be responsible for doing that, we need to be pervy about where we're slinging around 15 grand, because it's actually 16,500 if, if we're looking at 1,100, so.
Is there any other comment on the motion to refer? Now, call a question. All those in favor of the motion to refer this back to the Public Safety Committee, say aye. Those opposed? Motion is passed to refer this back to the Public Safety. Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Goodbye. Thank you.